All right, sounds good. Good morning. Let's call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order at 9:02 a.m. Vicky, if you could please call the roll.
Felkowski.
Present.
Epic. Martin.
Here.
McNamie. Nunnely.
Here.
Sheets. Spence.
Here.
Swanson. Zibble.
Here. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Mr. Epic did right to say that he is unable to make it here today. If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zibble, would you please read the mission statement?
Certainly. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any public comments in the room today? Do we just want to maybe, you want to start, John? Okay, thank you. Sorry, and then if we want to maybe work our way around, we'll go counterclockwise.
Okay, my name is John Murphy. I've been a driver here since 1998. Started out part-time. I was working full-time at a chemical company. When the chemical company went out of business, I became full-time driver. So I do, I have seen the growth of Lake Tran and, you know, over the last 20-some years. And I'm here to just give you a little, I had a few notes here, but I think I'm just gonna speak from my experience of being a driver here. And with that, you know, today, we have at least twice, if not more, drivers than we had back in 98. And when I first came here, I was very impressed with the operations, the people, the management, my coworkers, the people that I came in contact, you know, when I'm out there on the road, you know, servicing seniors and people with disabilities. And the thing is, my job starts and ends in the garage. That's where I do a 12-point pre-check to make sure I have a safe vehicle that's going to get the job done for these seniors and people with disabilities especially. Now, when you're working with seniors and you're working with people with disabilities, you're gonna have delays. That's just part of the job. But if you start out with a clean bus, a safe bus, your job goes a lot smoother. And we have a great team here that is always willing to go above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to putting a vehicle out on the road. The mechanics we got here, second to none. If you got a light that's burned out, you got a wiper that's bad, you got a flat tire, they stop what they're doing to make sure that you're taking out a decent bus so you can do your job. Now, throughout the years, I've seen the growth of Lake Tran. You know, we've, we started out, you know, just a, just a few hundred, I think, rides we would schedule a day back in, back when I was first started. To a one-time before the pandemic, you know, we were up to like, sometimes 1,500 rides. We didn't have the buses or the drivers to provide the service to our community that is required. And that's one of the reasons why we went to the, you know, to the, the levy. So, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time here. I'm here to answer any questions, you know, after the meeting, you know, I'm here to, you know, to, to give you my feedback. I know I got other people here that want to speak, but I encourage each and one of, each one of you to come out and spend, if you haven't already, spend a little bit of time with the driver as he's doing his job. So you can see firsthand, you know, what, what we're doing. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment today? And again, I did not say this earlier, so that's my apology. If we could please try to keep our remarks to three minutes, that'd be excellent. Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Cody. I've been working here for seven years now. Started out in the garage and now I am a full-time driver. I just want to speak about the garage expansion. I believe that the garage expansion would be very beneficial. Not only, well, let me just, let me just stick to the most important thing, I think, is during the winter. There's gonna be snow on the roof of the bus and we cannot take a bus out with snow on the roof with the reason being that the snow could come off the bus and hit the car behind us or cause a traffic disturbance. So we're gonna need people to take the snow off of the roof and it's not gonna be the drivers. I don't see any of us drivers climbing up on the roof to get, take the snow off. So have storing the dialer rides inside of the garage is pretty beneficial. Along with having, so most of our drivers are retirees and having a driver go through an icy parking lot during the winter could be hazardous. So not having a garage expansion is not only dangerous for our own drivers, but also the public if we do not remove the snow from the bus. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments in the room today? Yes, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Millie Ross and I've been here 10 years. And I want to speak on the locker expansion. Everyone needs a locker to put their personal items in their lunch. We're not allowed to use our cell phones, so it'd be a nice idea to put our cell phones in our lockers while we driving. Our lunches, I just want to, expansion on lockers. Everyone need lockers and we, some people share lockers and some things are being missed. So if possible, we all need lockers like we have closets at home. Thank you.
Are there any other comments in the room today?
Morning. My name is Tom Gaber. I've worked at Lake Tran for 20 years. As a driver, dispatcher, road supervisor, and currently the lead trainer. Prior to that, I spent several decades in industrial automation, especially CNC controls. Have a broad range of training experience. For Lake Tran, we do all training in-house. It includes new driver, commercial driver, first aid, EDA compliance remedial, and new equipment driver orientation. From a training standpoint, we're blessed with having clean, well-maintained, modern equipment with the latest safety features and wonderful drivers. One of our most exciting current projects is helping the drivers adapt their skills to the new electric bus fleet. Our training site could be anywhere from one-on-one in the driver's room, onboard a vehicle, or the traditional classroom. I will describe our classroom. It is a repurposed maintenance bay adjacent to maintenance, complete with the occasional impact wrench sounds from a stubborn nut that would rather stay with its nut buddies than go it alone. Well, a couple of years ago, I used a corner of the classroom as my office. It was particularly opportune because drivers passed it on the way to the driver's room given their ready access to ask the occasional quick operational question or point out a training opportunity, especially something safety-related. With the addition of another trainer and increased alternative needs for the classroom space by other departments, it was necessary for us to relocate our office to the administrative area. Access to us now by drivers requires them to pass through two locked doors. That presents a significant barrier to their valuable input. Our office consists of two desks situated as an island in the middle of the main office. We are surrounded by cubes and typical pedestrian traffic, sometimes even traffic between our desks. Although the administrative staff has gone out of their way to welcome us, the busy environment can be somewhat distracting, especially when we need to concentrate on an intense technical subject. Does anyone remember WKRP in Cincinnati and Les Nessman's office? Yeah. As a result, I usually arrive and work around 5:30 and take advantage of the quiet time so as to be more productive. Proposed building changes would allow us space to make our training room more productive, provide a shared quiet office space, and most importantly, access to our drivers. Those drivers are so important to providing the valuable feedback, which allows us to improve the quality of our safety and training program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments in the room this morning?
Good morning. My name is Paula Krisnark. I'm one of the drivers. I have more so a question as to a comment. As my understanding is, we have received a $20 million grant from transportation to build this addition. My question is, why is it would we return this $20 million grant? Who's, which is really not going to go back to the people of Ohio. It's gonna go to another transportation system. It's gonna go, we're gonna give $20 million perhaps to RTA and, you know, Metro, somebody down south. And this is money that we can use to improve and expand Lake Tran. Because before this pandemic, we were growing, like they had mentioned earlier, we were not able to keep up with what needed to be done. This is gonna happen again. It might not look like it right now, but it will because our elderly population is expanding. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the room?
Hello. My name is Steve. I'm a driver. I've been a driver for about two years and before that I was a hostile. I would like to talk a little bit about the situation in the dispatch area. See, the, the, the people in dispatch are currently in desk, in, you know, sharing desks that are very close together. And when someone's on the phone, you know, they can hear the conversation and it's, is very distracting, you know, for the, the other person that's on dispatch trying to handle the radio traffic. So an expansion in dispatch would, would help with the safety and communication with the, with the drivers. I had some other things, but everybody else pretty much touched on that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in the room today? Not seeing any. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. At this time, the purpose of today's special meeting was, Board Member Sheets had requested the board hold a special meeting to discuss the headquarters renovation and expansion. Upon receiving their request, I did grant the request. And at this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Sheets.
Thanks, Brian. I've been a board member here before years now. I've watched a lot of things that have happened. And the COVID-19 just threw a monkey wrench into just about everything. And what it did, it, it knocked our demand for our service, in some cases, down by 90%. We've, we recovered, but not fully, in every one of the services. Other things that have happened too. The commuter service for downtown Cleveland has gone in the dumper, so to speak. Some of the companies have decided that their employees will never return to an office because they all seem to be comfortable with the working-from-home environment. And the companies like it because it's less expensive for them. All in all, the local routes have, with our new electric buses, they have been flat, flatlined for the last 10 or 15 years. They're not growing. I just don't see the need to spend $20 million on a expansion until we get a better handle on the return of the dialer ride, return of the demand for dialer ride, and anything that happens with the local routes and/or the commuter express. This is not to say that we're gonna cancel the expansion. I think we need to put a stop to it and look at the headquarters here of, at things that really absolutely need to be done now and take care of those things. And any major expansion put off for a period of time. And I put down two years at one time, but that's, there's no, there's no way to put an exact time limit on it. But this is not canceling the expansion. It's just delaying it at a later point in time, which we don't even know what that is yet. Because if you've been watching the news, we have this new variant, the Delta variant, or whatever they're calling it, that is causing havoc across the country and the world, for that matter. So we really don't know when the COVID issues are gonna be done with. So why would we want to spend $20 million expanding the headquarters and not have the demand that it, that we think it's gonna be? So for those reasons, I think delaying the expansion until we have a good, solid understanding of what our demand for our services are. And that's really basically it.
Okay, thank you. So if I, just to, just so I understand what you're saying. It sounds like what you're saying is you would like to pause the expansion of the building, but take care of any necessary maintenance items. Is that accurate or is that me putting words in your mouth?
I, I think that's what you, yes. There are some things that need to be done immediately. The first one that comes to mind for me anyway is our front walk here. That's a disaster. I wouldn't, I can hardly walk over, but I have trouble walking. I can only imagine what a person in a wheelchair or that's disabled would have trouble getting across there. That should be fixed immediately. Don't quite understand why it hasn't been in the last few years.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion regarding the headquarters renovation and expansion?
I've got a question, if I could, maybe some, and I don't know the answer to it, but I think we have a standing question from the floor about what happens to the $20 million. I think that's a bona fide question. And I don't know the answer to it. So I guess I'd like to have a quick discussion about that. My understanding is cash is in the bank and it's ours not to be returned. Is that incorrect?
I will let Ben chime in, but the $20 million was not given to us as a grant for headquarters expansion. My understanding is it's our cash and we are under no obligation to return it to anyone, but I'll let Ben confirm that.
Technically, it's a combination of the two. It is grant, there are three separate grants received as part of COVID Relief Act dollars, which total about $21.5 million. What we have been doing with it is allocating it to operations, spending that on operations and putting our local sales tax in the bank. So about, I, I would need Lisa to confirm this, about 12 million of it is in the bank? And there's still another eight or nine and a half to go?
Um, yeah, there's two parts to it. We've earned it. We have. So there's two parts to it. We had the CARES Act, which was the first one we received. We fully drew that down. So that is in the bank. And that was about, let's say, $7 million. And now we are working on the CHRISAA grant, which was the second grant, which is about almost $5 million. And we have earned a portion of that. I am in the works to draw that down for January through June for our operations. And then the balance of that will be drawn down when we use it for our operational expense from July to December. And then the third grant, which was the American Recovery Act, that one was like 9. some million dollars. And we'll probably use whatever we, whatever we use up in the CHRISAA for our expenses, the rest of our expenses will put towards the American Recovery. So we'll probably draw a small portion of that down towards the end of the year, first part of next year to finish up closing out our books for 2021. And then the balance of the American Recovery will be drawn down in 2022. That's what my estimate. It really depends on your expenses, but we're using it all for the operations.
So just to clarify Gary's question, we're under no obligation to return any funds?
No. It's, it's really mainly, we did use some of the, um, no, we're not gonna return any of it. And a portion of that CARES Act we used towards some buses also, which we drew down. So. But yes, we will, we will be keeping that money because we will earn it through our operations.
Okay. Gary, did that answer what you were looking for?
Well, it answered my question. I want to make sure it answers the speaker's question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Gary. Any other thoughts or comments in the room? Yes, Donna. Donna, could you use your microphone, please? Sorry.
My greatest concern here is we're already seeing signs of dialer ride not having enough capacity internally to sufficiently deliver rides. If we delay this for a couple of years, if I'm correct, if I'm remembering correctly, you indicated this is about a two-year project to bring online.
Yeah, the, the, I mean, the architects have estimated two years. If we were to go to bid and receive a bid, or they would give us the official schedule, but the current estimate is, is two years.
So, let's say just, for example, we started construction next January. It would be two years from that point before we had a functional facility to deal with it.
That is, that is the current estimate.
That's the current estimate. Okay. Given that delay right there, I think this is a problem for our operations. And I am very concerned that we are not going to have the proper capacity to deliver these rides. And it's not just about maintenance of sidewalks. We have to be able to grow. And I don't know where in this building we're going to grow to, to provide the facilities our operations staff needs to do that. This area back here by Ben's office used to be open, like a little living room area. That is now practically filled with desks. We have a desk in our lobby where customer service is functioning from as needed. You get on the phone while we have a callback number that you put your number in and that you get an automatic callback when you're trying to make a reservation. Sometimes it's over an hour before you get that callback. If you get a callback. This is just insane to me that we would sit on this and let all this happen in the meantime. I understand that our colleagues here at this table are concerned about the $20 million cost. I fully recognize that. I respect that. And I know, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, what really started worrying people was when we had a 10 million estimate and a 20 million cost. Mr. Chairman, what I would like to propose is that we put this on hold by way of hiring, directing our CEO to hire a nationally recognized design and engineering firm that is experienced in existing and new garage maintenance facilities and so on. So that they really understand what they're looking at and get an independent cost analysis. And once that comes back, we take a look at that, however long that takes. And I, I would assume that it wouldn't be more than a year. Would that be your guess? Something like that.
I would actually ask Chuck that question. I, I'm not exactly sure. Do you have an idea?
The procurement method or time being probably the biggest part of the process. And that's probably what, two months, three months? And then to have somebody do an estimate on it, probably if they could get on it full-time, it'd be a couple of months. I think you're talking six months in terms of a delay. But in my, in my opinion, Donna, the, the actual construction costs, if you go to bids,
if you go to bids, you get an actual construction cost from the contractor, that's going to be much more accurate than even asking somebody else to do the proposal. I'm not opposed to having a third party do it. I think that would be a good idea to go forward with something like that. But I also would be cognizant of some of the delay. And when you're finished, I have some other comments regarding some of that.
I don't think the delay would be as severe as just putting it off for two years and doing nothing. And I think it could provide a comfort level for our colleagues at this table who are questioning this huge gap. If we had a third-party independent opinion of what this would cost. And that's why I think it's important that we have someone who is very familiar with the kind of facility we need to construct.
Mr. Zabel, looks like you wanted to respond to some of that.
Well, I, what I'd like to do is just really kind of just go back a little bit. We talk about planning, we talk about having, to see where the numbers are going to be coming in at. And I, and I understand that this pandemic time, nobody could have put that into any kind of SWAT analysis and came up with that as being a threat to any of the processes that we're going to be going through here with that. But I think even going back to when we first started talking about this in 2018 and 2019, the overload was already there. We were reacting to the overload at that period of time. The pandemic actually gave us a little bit of time here to just to catch our breath a little bit and come up with a pretty decent plan of how to go forward. And, and Lane, I don't have any crystal ball, but it certainly would seem to me that the pandemic has put a very big dip into Dial-A-Ride ridership. But again, I think as things begin to open up again, I don't think all the senior centers are open yet again. And we're going to start to see that rise back again. And it's going to get up to the level that we had. In 2019, we did go out and ask the public for a levy to fix Dial-A-Ride because we were going to be growing at 25%. And that required us to hire more people, that required us to hire more dispatchers, drivers and purchase more buses, which then leads to some of the needs for the expansion here of the headquarters. So if we're not of the opinion that the Dial-A-Ride demand is going to be, again, on the increase and continue to increase, then I, then I get that part of it of being concerned and holding off until or later. But in my opinion, I think the demand is going to be there and it's going to be coming back pretty quick. So I think there's a very true need for the building expansion. And I agree too that the renovation part of it with the maintenance of the 30-year-old building is very important also.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Any other questions or statements, Mr. Martin?
Yeah, just to give you a few comments here. I mean, I think I am concerned also about the demand. The demand for the increase in growth in Dial-A-Ride prior to going to the public, back when, prior to the pandemic, was never really clear to me. The charts that I saw that were given to us by management showed that we were handling our Dial-A-Ride services with the staff that we had at that time. Now, we are talking now about something different, a brand-new demand curve, where we don't know exactly what the demand is going to be going forward. And we're talking about a need for an expansion without understanding the demand. And so I get concerned about, I don't know what the capacity is. I don't know what our costs are today. I don't know what our costs are going to be in the future with a building addition. I hate the fact that we have bus drivers that are worried about how we're going to handle this problem in the future. That really, really bothers me. The locker rooms for the bus drivers, there's no reason in the world why we can't already have had that fixed so that everybody has a proper level of lockers. We've had this money for quite some time. And it also concerns me that I always thought that we would never have to return this money. Lisa has explained this time and again. I've been on the board for three years, so I realize that. But I never thought that anybody would have to go under the impression that that money was going to be returned one day. It's not. It's very clear. I don't know what the extra demand is going to be for Dial-A-Ride going forward. I don't know who's calculated in all the different, you know, doctor visits that don't have to happen now because of the pandemic and it's being done electronically. I don't know who's making those estimates. So I hear a lot of statements quite often in meetings just like this, and it's painful to hear any bus driver be concerned that we're not going to try to act in the best interests, you know, of the bus drivers. That's what we're here for. And so we need to make sure that the riding public and everybody that uses the buses are going to be satisfied. The bus drivers are going to be satisfied. Things like the front sidewalks, the bus, bus drivers' locker rooms, any other training facilities to make sure that we're training safely. And we're talking about safety and, and reducing our accident rates, that we're doing whatever we can to make that happen. But that's a completely different discussion to me than adding on X amount of square foot for a number of buses that I can't even tell you exactly right now how many buses we're talking about that are going to have to be parked outside. That's never been revealed to me. I don't know what the demand and the capacity and the efficiency of the movement of the buses is. I don't know how, why we can't move buses off-site for some of our services, but we can't do it for our core services. I don't know how we remove snow from the top of buses today if they're parked outside while we're driving. So, you know, all of this information needs to come up and needs to be discussed. And everybody needs to get on the same page, at least for me, so that we can handle these problems, solve these problems, do the right thing for the riders and get this information out there so that we're all armed with the same set of facts. And so for that reason, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making a decision to spend $20 million on a building expansion that, where I don't have any data. I don't have any data in order to make that, make that decision, you know, based on. I don't have the data today. I don't have what the data was in 2018 and 19. I don't know what the projected data is going to be in 2021 and 22 as a result of the pandemic. And so for me, it's, it's, you know, it's very clear that there, there, there needs to be some things done and we need to, we need to do our job and we need to have management do their job. But I certainly can't support a, the expansion plan that's been put forth with no real backup data. So that's, that's my position here at this point here. So if anybody wants to ask me a question, feel free to.
Yes, Donna. Yes. Donna, if you could use your microphone, please.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn it on, this is new. Respectfully, I just want to correct one comment that in 19, we were handling the rides. They were getting done, but it was a nightmare for the passengers. And expanding beyond even that level where we were at in 19, see if we got the levy passed. What was it? Am I remembering correctly, 4 million we put into it extra to try to bring it up to speed to alleviate some of the tight pressure? It was, it was a number significant that the board agreed we would put into that by the time the levy passed to see where we were at. It didn't pass, we knew we were going to have to make cuts more catastrophic than we did in 2009 after the financial meltdown and our sales tax funding dropped. That said, people could not get rides. I heard complaints on the bus like crazy. At that point, my mother was in a skilled nursing facility. I had to schedule my rides to see her six days a week by basically laying over in Mentor at the Coles Plaza or Lowe's or someplace like that, which was roughly a mile and a half from Altercare. And what that did was it got me the guaranteed ride from my home, which is on a bus route, out on Mentor Avenue where we're still on a bus route. Then they had a better chance of finding a bus and a driver for a quick trip from that area, Coles Plaza, let's say, down, I think it was Country Lane, to get me to Altercare. And once they started doing that, when I came up with that, then I don't know how many other passengers they tried that with. Some probably weren't willing to do it or couldn't do it. But that's how I did it. This was a nightmare, a complete nightmare. And some days you could not get where you needed to go. If you were ADA certified, you would get the trip. And then they tried to prioritize medical trips. But there were many, many times, and the passengers felt this severely. This is why I'm advocating, I mean, I'm in favor of getting more data. And I certainly am in favor of a third-party cost analysis. And if that will help us all, great, let's do it.
A couple of thoughts from my perspective. If you look at the history of pandemics, it takes about four years to run through historically. We're only at the end of year one. I don't think anybody understands what this means going forward. If, if, I think until we get a better handle on that, clearly that's going to distort any numbers that we look at to some extent. It's going to clearly distort, I think, what future expectations would be until we work our way through this pandemic. And it, you know, that's related to the, the fact that it, it takes that long for the pandemic, the disease to work its way through the system. And, and we get, what is it called? Where the whole population begins herd immunity, thank you. That herd immunity takes about four years to get, historically speaking. And, and so we're a ways away from that. And I think that's at the core of the discomfort for some of us that we don't know what the numbers are and what, what they're going to look like going forward. And assuming, you know, we're already seeing it, New York City just said, well, masks again. The Giant Eagle just announced masks again for their employees. Who knows what this is going to do to us going forward? And I think until we have a clearer picture of that, I think there's a certain amount of prudence that we have to take into consideration. Donna, to your point, I, I think your idea is, is about a cost review is a, is a great idea. I think a subset of that, though, if we're, it isn't just a matter of studying the two bids that we've had or the first estimate and, and a bid, if that's the right term. I think it's a process review that we have to look at also. It, it, I think we need to study, going to John's comments. I, I feel the same way. I feel like you're asking me to vote for $20 million and I don't understand why. And my fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers makes me think, you know, why am I spending $20 million? Or how in good conscience can I spend $20 million if I don't understand where the $20 million is going and why? So if we can, if we can dig towards getting those kinds of answers, I for one would be a whole lot more comfortable about this process of where we're going. And there, I think there's one more consideration that we really haven't even talked about at this point. And that is, at some point, we're going to have to go back out for another renewal of the levy. I just wonder how $20 million for a building, which is the way it would be seen in the public. I just wonder how that's going to play out when we come back and say, gee, we'd like to renew, or we'd like to expand, or we'd like to continue the levy. I wonder how that's going to play with the electric. Are we going to set ourselves up for one really difficult next vote on a levy? If we just spent $20 million on a building? What does that do specifically for the taxpayer? And what does it do for the rider specifically if you're not, if you're not into the process and understand the difficulties? And I don't think any, at least speaking for myself, I don't think anybody underestimates the difficulties related to our current building and the way it's structured and the needs that we have. I don't think anybody's ignoring that. But John Q. Public, I don't know, they understand that. And so what happens when we go to ask for the next round of financing? That's a concern I think we ought to, we ought to be thinking about.
May I answer a couple of those questions? Chime in. As far as the $20 million in the building expansion, the way that is ultimately going to have to be framed, whether it's 10 or 20 when we get into it, is sustainability of the service. Because the levy generates so much money. And we are going to have, by then, we waited until that next levy was due at the 10-year point. That would be 20, 2029. And I would hate to see this drug out that far because we are going to have problems. I understand everybody's concern, but we have an aging population. And I think that is the key difference here. And they're not just getting older, they're becoming more disabled. And that very much concerns me that they're going to have these sufficient rides that they need in order to live independently. And I think that is going to be a key coming out of this pandemic, given what's happened in our skilled nursing facilities and the lockdowns where they couldn't see family. I know in the architectural world, they are also trying to figure out how to go forward. They're still going to need these facilities. But how can they mitigate this? And they're hearing through that industry that they are hearing among families. They've done surveys and people were very much against being locked out and away from their families. And people are asking the question, what can we do to mitigate this if it happens again? So there are a lot of variables here. But I would really like to see this kept going because just putting it on hold without undertaking the kind of study and a cost analysis, to me, that is, that's wrong because we're not facing the problem at any level. I think we have to do this. One other comment, and that is, Lake Tran has always been a leader in renovation or to implementation of Dial-A-Ride and paratransit services. We've been rationally recognized almost from the beginning. There are many resources out there. And what we're doing here is likely to inform others in the industry. Sometimes not just our system, but larger ones as well. And I think that there are so many reasons why, from our ridership, the problems throughout the industry, we really need to take advantage of the resources we have available to us to look at this long and hard. And I would hope within a year, we will have a better idea of what we need and so on. And another comment is, I don't know how many in this room are aware, but a few years ago, the Board of Commissioners actually But a few years ago, the Board of Commissioners actually hired someone to help them deal with the impact. Of a growing senior population. They put out a report at that time on their website. That somewhat mirrored what we know about Lake Tran. And. In order for their programs to work, they have to be able to get people to them. This is where Lake Tran started in 1988 at the first levy. That was successfully passed. In essence. The levy committee CEO of Lake Tran Frank Palivka. They promised the health and human service community. And these nonprofits who were functioning with a patchwork quilt of funding. But if you help us get this levy passed, your transportation for your clients are going to be over. They had already absorbed some of that and it was being funded. By literally a patchwork of funding, which was drying up. And. That really became like transferred butter in how we function. And why we were existing here. Not as a traditional transit system. And that is very unusual in the industry. I can't think of another system that has grown as ours has done. That started out doing demand response. And that's what we did. When the ADA came along, we basically had to. Dot the i's and cross the t's because we were already doing so much of what the ADA required. So we have a lot of advantages and I would hope. That all of you. Could support what I have been suggesting to. Now that John has added to, to dig into some more information. And as far as the cost analysis, I would hate to just give. Someone what we have already done in terms of the budget and the estimates, I want them to start fresh. And. Look at the cost from that perspective.
Thank you very much, Donna. One of the things that is ringing. Clear to me here is all the board members agree. That some sort of project or work needs to be done here, other it's maintenance, expansion, something, there's work that needs to be done. One of the things that John has said that I found to be very true is sometimes it's very. Disappointing to hear an employee's experience. For example, if we talked about the garage ventilation at the last meeting. Ventilation had been talked about as being part of this project. But I've been on the board, I checked this morning for 10 years and three months. And never once did I hear about the state that the ventilation system was in. Heard that it need to be replaced, but never have the board tabled it or heard that it was in such disrepair. To hear about the locker situation, that's extremely disappointing. I can't imagine that it would be that difficult for us to. Put some lockers in as a solution to the employees. What I'm struggling with here today though is. Is, is the board in a disagreement over the? Dollar cost of the project because myself, I couldn't tell you what a five million versus a 10 million versus a $20 million project buys. I don't have. A way to relate that to real dollars. Or are we disappointed with the process and we want to see more options or learn what five or $10 million buys? Or get deeper into the data to learn what are the top three things that need to be done and work our way down the list? So if anyone has some guidance or wisdom on what they're looking for, and it looks like Danielle is already willing to.
I mean, I, I, yeah, I agree with the items that you're saying, you know. I've worked on $140 million renovation projects, most recently one coming in over at $20 million by the time the project was done. And the reason that was over was because we had old pricing on stuff. But I've never come across a project where it has been doubled. And the reason I believe this project was doubled is because we went somewhere that was a transportation specialist. And got pricing for that, not sure that the building and what we're asking with brick and mortar. And classroom sizes and some other things needs to be directly related to a consultant who does that kind of work. I believe CT was the first company that we went to, might have had decent pricing. I mean, preferably, I think I'd like to see some of these different items broken out into maybe different packages. That we can prioritize and maybe hit things, you know, six months out, we can redo the ventilation and another two months, we can start another. Maybe the front sidewalks or some other pieces and parts that we can piece, you know, a whole thing together instead of just saying 20 million for this. And that's what it's going to be, you know, overall too, I'd like to see a little bit of this money go back to. I believe the riders, you know, going down Mentor Ave, excuse me. And some other areas and seeing people sitting on the grass and on the sidewalk. When we could potentially put a couple more covered seating areas out there. To help some of the bigger stops in these places. You know, I'd like to see some of this work go back out into the community instead of just being all right here. So the taxpayers can see that, hey, we're trying to help these other riders and these people who can't. Get to places, do those types of things. So. You know, those are a couple of, I guess, my opinions on the project and where I'd like to see. Maybe just a better use, you know, I don't know if that means hiring someone. For Lake Tran for another year, who is a project manager, someone who was working on behalf of Lake Tran. The board in all of our best interest and they're working directly with consultants and saying, yes, no. That's too high, this is too much because there's going to be a lot of procurement in this too, that we don't know where. Supplying materials are coming from, you know, I'm, we're, I'm doing a roofing project over at the ballpark and. We can't get insulation, you know, there's a lot of things that are behind that, hey, maybe we can move forward on one of these areas because we know we have those materials. And stacking on hand. So I think a couple of these projects can be broken down. I don't know if anybody else thinks that, but those are just a couple of my opinions. So thank you.
Thank you. I agree with what was just said. I, I think the idea of giving the board. Timing issues and, you know, one from column A, one from column B kind of thing, so we can understand. Sort of how these things interlace with each other and how they interplay over a period of time. I, I think that would be very, very helpful as a board member. Right now. You know, it's a $20 million or die kind of thing and, and that's just inherently uncomfortable to me. So be, to be able to break that down and understand it and prioritize it a little bit, I think, I think that fits well. With where we as a board ought to be at this point.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, I just want to concur with Gary on this and I think those options that we consider in terms of. You know, staging out some of the cap, there's a capital improvement. Part of this, which is the building and things are going to last, you know, two or three years or more. And then there are the programmatic things that maybe need to be done in terms of fixing the dialer ride. Process to make sure that we've got all of the best practices in play. And we're taking, taking it at a step level also if needed, if required. So. I see that as an important, you know, aspect of us going forward here and. You know, focusing on the headquarters renovation within itself with these monies that we have, I think would definitely be a mistake. So. Just wanted to kind of drive that point home and. You know, just make sure that, that. If, if there is a, if there is a way to break it up in phases. And we, we see options. And we take a look at the options that are available. That would make it a lot more comfortable coupled with the data. That we've been looking for that backed up where we were in 18 and 19. That, you know, explains very clearly what Donna was just saying about the poor service. That we had in 18 and 19 and then how that service is going to be better. Once the demand comes back in the future, so. Thank you.
I just would. Challenge you, Brian, to see if there's a way that we can define a process of how we're going to go about getting. The information gathered together and presented so that we can see. What the questions are being done here. So there's probably needs to be some discussion about how, how to go forward from here.
And Mr. Chairman, I finally add, my only concern in defining that process. Is that we try to keep ahead of this curve, but that dialer ride ridership. Does not build to a point where it's having. A significant negative impact on our riders and our drivers, our operation staff. That we get into a situation where our service is a nightmare. So I'm not quite sure how we do that because I know there's time lags and buying buses, hiring drivers and so on. And having the space for them. So I think we just have to be cognizant of that in going forward.
I think that is a well taken point. One of the things I would. Say in response to that is, I think Gary pointed out that, you know, we're one year into this pandemic right now. And my office is in Beechwood in Cuyahoga County and Cuyahoga County is what's called a hotspot right now. So. We're back to masks in our office and social distancing and. Unfortunately, it seems like something like that and it's cropping up again in society. So I do think we have some time. I don't think we want to kick this years. I think we want to keep this moving. We don't want to take. Breaks. I think what I'm hearing from everyone is we want to do a project. But we want to do something within our means and make sure that we're doing things in the proper order. Whether it's the largest maintenance need or the most important expansion space possibly. So. Chuck, I want to go back to you for half a second. So when you're saying define the process, I just want to clarify. That a little bit. What are you looking for?
There was a lot, there was a lot of questions brought up in, in my mind and. As I, I said here and I, I think about, okay, how are we going to gather that data? How are we going to present that data? Who's going to be involved in getting that data pulled together? Is there going to be a multitude of meetings that we're going to have to discuss a lot of the data and developing the data? Just how, how, how does that being seen? I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily think that it would be. Totally fair to say, Ben, give us all this data. And present it back to us because then he's taking a kind of a shot in the dark as to really what is the root cause or what is the root question? For us to be answering here. So I think, I think there's got to be some, some other means there of, of. Continuing the conversations that we've had here today to say, this is what we want to see and to help make our decision.
Can I propose something?
Absolutely, please. Thank you.
With, with, with a full board, it seems to me that. We could drive Ben insane. You know, if he's not already insane, we may have already. It's, it's an impossible task for him to satisfy. Each of us individually 110% kind of a thing.
Agreed.
And we're asking way too much of him to do that. So. Maybe what we need to do is consider a, a subcommittee of the board that would work hand in hand with Ben and with. Whatever consultant that would be able to drive that process forward and, and come back to the board. Full board at appropriate times to make. Subsequent sorts of reports so that we're all on board. But none of us have necessarily, I don't, it's not necessarily appropriate for all of us to do the deep dive into every meeting for every purpose. So it seems to me a subcommittee might, might be appropriate at this point.
Gary, just from your experience, how many members have you found on a subcommittee is an effective way to get business done without? Hindering the process?
Well, it goes up exponentially. The difficulty goes up exponentially. You know, it's a little bit like the insanity of teenagers. One, one is insane, two are just out of control and, you know. By the time you get to five, forget it. Committee work seems to be the same, at least in my experience. So.
I'm hearing three?
I'm, I'm thinking two or, well, probably three, you know, would probably be appropriate. I think you get much beyond that and it's going to get. Kind of where we're at right now, you know, we're talking, but we're, we're not moving forward. So. I think we charge a committee to, to, to work with Ben and whoever else is appropriate and, and those. Three board members drive the process forward so that the rest of the board feels like we're getting. We're, we're going to get the chance at an output that helps us make a very momentous decision.
Chime in real quick.
Absolutely, sir.
Gary, I think that's a great idea. Three does seem to be the magic number I've found in subcommittees as well. You kind of get in discussions like this and I've been on the board now for about a year and a half and. I feel like we've had almost the same conversations over and over again with no real way of how we're moving forward. And today I think was good because I think there's some clear questions that people want answered. I think majority of us are in agreeance of not stopping this process altogether. There's definitely a need for public safety, employee safety. Our ridership, our community. So I think we need to move forward in some sense, whether it's breaking it down into phases, seeing those options. You know, is it better to move? Sometimes it's in a big project, it's better to move forward altogether versus breaking it out in phases. But it seems everybody wants to see those options and I think that's okay. If moving forward with getting a third party to come in and do a cost analysis, if that's what's going to help, you know, make everyone comfortable, that's great. But yeah, I think it's, we need to address all these questions and be able to move forward and keep this going because. These conversations are delaying the project and we've all kind of made an agreement. Most of us don't want to delay this project. So I think we need to do what we can to get these answers question, questions answered and, and move forward with this project in some sense.
Well, I think at this point, if you are interested in serving on a committee to. Work on the building expansion, if you could, please reach out to me, emails fine or call. I will just, in full disclosure, I'm going to pass on serving on the committee. I trust that. You know, getting some opinions and information from other board members is incredibly important. I think it's, again, I'm going to keep reiterating that we're. Everyone's on board with doing something. It's just making sure we pick the right project and the right process. Going to the committee stage though, I'm not sure right now today, it makes a lot of sense to get a third estimate until the committee meets to determine. What possibly they would like to do or the recommendation to the board. I, I don't think that's very helpful right now. Did anyone have any thoughts on that topic?
In terms of just the estimate, Brian, I, I think you're, you're right on with, let's wait and see what the committee. Indicates that they're looking for. I mean, it's, it's just one more point on the data, data screen that you're going to get. Is to help make some of the decisions and maybe there'll be different options. And when you start breaking it into phases and things like that. The cost estimate is going to change because you've got some remobilization costs there that you're going to have to be dealing with and. Different contractors are probably coming in on, on the different phases. So. I think there's some value in, in holding off and trying to get that third estimate at this point.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts? So I, again, please reach out to me if you'd like to be on a committee and we will move forward. Mr. Sheets, it looks like you have something to say.
I can't hear you real clear. Get closer to the mic.
Sorry, um, please reach out to me if you want to be on the committee and then I will take a look and we will get going on this ASAP. To appoint a committee and to get started with Ben and his team on the process and building project. Okay, one other item that is not on our agenda that has been mentioned to me numerous times is WSP. And the work that's been performed and provided at the board meetings. It seems like from my colleagues, all of you, that there is some discussion on. The quality and the work. Does anyone have any thoughts or feedback regarding WSP at this time? Yes, Donna? Microphone.
I think, given what we're about to do. I think that basically needs to go on hold. We have a better focus because that's our strategic plan.
Donna, could you move the mic a little closer to your face, please? Thank you.
I believe we need to put this on hold with WSP. How are we going to meet to discuss a strategic plan till we get this information? What, whether or not we go back with them or not, that's another discussion. But in the immediate future, I'm not sure where this is going when a lot of us haven't been real impressed with where we've been so far. And I believe this other process, we're about to undertake, will ultimately inform and drive the strategic plan.
Thank you, Donna. Any other thoughts regarding WSP?
I've not been very impressed with their work. Certainly, their presentations have been sophomoric. They just, they were being treated like children. I mean, there's no, for me, there's no other way to say it. So much of the information that is being presented to us is so obvious that there, it's a waste of time. As far as I'm concerned, in complete agreement with Donna, I think we should put it on hold until we figure out a little bit more about where we're trying to go.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I'm going to agree with the two comments over there, too, with the fact that I think what number of the questions that came up today are really going to come up during the strategic planning portion of it anyway. So if to not delay the strategic planning process and getting these questions and getting understanding of all the projections and that going forward, I think there's some value in, in delaying, again, the the strategic planning process, starting that proceed, strategic planning process.
I guess I would also just add, add on to that, just one thing that Gary alluded to. I, I don't think that they are being, just from what I can tell from their presentations and my one discussion with them, that they are really going to truly give us an, an independent viewpoint. So for the same reason that we need an independent viewpoint as to what is happening with the cost on the building, I think we need to really put them on hold and at the very least question their independence in terms of the strategy discussion that they're getting ready to have with us.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Mr. Dines, I'm going to refer a question or two to you. When the board talks about possibly putting it on hold, I'm presuming the only way to do that is to terminate the contract?
Yeah, Mr. Felkowski, the, the board can essentially terminate the contract with WSP. You could, you could certainly negotiate a hold of it as well. In doing so, we have 30 days notice provision in that contract. And then we are not paying for anything that's not already been provided. Of course, as standard, we pay for the services provided to date.
So have we been, have we been making progress payments to them?
Believe Mr. Kapelk, it was a lump sum payment, and, and that was the way the contract was written, but progress was made, and Lisa could address that, too, that there were, there were certainly progress payments or progress billing, if you will, stated within the contract, they were supposed to provide to us as to what's been done.
So Lisa, could you confirm, did we pay them in full for their services?
I'd have to check to see, but I'm pretty sure they're progress payments. They go through Andrea. Once they've completed certain amounts of work, they get paid for the work that they've done.
So, for example, they send a bill for $10,000, we pay them $10,000. We did not pay them their full contract upfront.
I, I don't think that we have. I'd have to double check that to be sure, because I know there was.
We, we have not. We, they received, they send us invoices monthly. So there's, there's, we not, we did not pay them upfront for anything.
Okay, because there was a note on there about a lump sum payment. That's why I was a little bit unsure of that. So, thank you.
We, 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 I don't think we ever agreed to contracts in that way unless it's after the.
Yeah, I can actually run a report after this just to see what we've paid them to date. I don't think we've paid them the whole thing, but I know we pay in progress payments.
So I'm trying to take the temperature of the room a little bit. It seems like the decision here is to either terminate the agreement with WSP or Mr. Dines, if I'm understanding you, try to reach an agreement to put the contract on hold essentially and ask them to just pause work?
Yeah, I, I think the board could do whatever it pleases. Certainly, if we wanted to put them on hold and have them take no further action at this time, subject to the board reinstituting the contract, it could, we could certainly do that. If it was the board's position, they wanted to terminate the contract, we'd terminate it with 30 days' notice.
Okay. Again, willing to hear anyone's thoughts on the matter?
Yes, I think we should terminate the agreement. And I think we should get a, another firm to do our strategic planning. We hired the same firm that did it seven years ago and gave us a 10-year plan. Well, the 10-year plan isn't up for three more years, and so far, what I've heard from this guy is a sales pitch about the headquarter expansion. I don't know what all that has to do with a strategic plan, but I don't think he's doing what he was hired to do. I think we should terminate the contract and get another firm that doesn't have a history of doing something seven years ago and get a better, a, a more, a better perspective, a, a different perspective of what they see. And I think that would do us a lot more good than having the same firm basically repeat what they did seven years ago. So I think we ought to terminate the contract.
I will quick, I just want to quickly clarify one thing. We, we did not pay Tim for his work to give us his opinion on the building project. I asked him to do that a, as a favor, as a, as a professional in the transit industry. So Lake Tran did not spend any dollars on that. I'm not trying to tell the board not to terminate his agreement, but I want to make it clear that we, we did not pay him for that time. That was something he did on his, his, on his own. So doesn't change any of the conversation. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware.
How are we as a board supposed to know that, Ben?
I, I said that when I introduced him.
Any other thoughts from anyone? Yes, Donna?
I could go either way, on hold or termination. But I have not been impressed. And if it were my druthers, once we come out of this process we've been talking about here today, I would much prefer that any strategic planning has a new perspective and is led by someone with a different perspective.
Thank you. Any other comments or feedback?
I agree. I think the, the two comments are spot on. A, a new perspective would be helpful.
So then let me ask this question. Is there a motion in the room to terminate the agreement with WSP?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McNamee, seconded by Mr. Sheets. Is there any remaining discussion on the topic? Vicki, please call the roll.
Martin?
A, a yes vote is a yes to terminate the agreement. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
Just going to ask that question. So, yeah, so the yes is going to terminate the contract, and so I vote yes.
McNamee?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dines, I don't know how involved you have to be with the termination of the contract, but we'll put this ball in your court a little bit. So we are moving forward with terminating the agreement for WSP at this time. You know, I've been thinking about the headquarters, just to go back very, very, very briefly. I'll probably reach out to each board member individually and then also get to work on the committee. I just need a little time to formulate my strategy to make sure that it's well thought out and then hand it over to the committee, but I will do that as quickly as possible within the next week. Is there any old business in the room?
Okay, real quick. So I just.
What are we doing with the current contract with Bowen or Bowen, whatever her name is?
It sounds like we're just not taking any action at this time. Nothing will be presented to the board to be voted on, is how I interpret it unless someone disagrees with that.
That's, that's what I was actually just about to mention is, we had, the strategic retreat was planned for September, which will be canceled. I will send out a revised six-month look ahead that doesn't have the building vote in September and looking at, you know, what's on the agenda for September and adjusting things. There wasn't much else on the agenda in September, so I'll work through that and send out a revised.
Well, let's, let's hold off on canceling right now until I have a chance to talk to.
I wasn't going to cancel the meeting.
The, no, but the retreat. I'd like to see what direction people would like to go, and if more discussion is warranted, please. Is there any old business in the room? Any new business? At this time, is there a motion to adjourn today's meeting? Second, motion made by Ms. Noneley, seconded by Mr. Swanson. Vicki, if you could, please call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
McNamee?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Spence?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at 10:20 today. I hope everyone has a nice rest of their day.